Good evening. Welcome to the public hearing for solar energy systems. I'd like to call the meeting to order. The following notice was published on April 1st, 2025. It's a public hearing notice of the City of Florence, Kentucky. The City of Florence, Kentucky will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, April 15th at 6:45 PM local time inside the council chambers of the Florence Government Center, 8100 Union Boulevard, Florence, Kentucky, 41042. For the purpose of consideration of Resolution R 24036A of the Boone County Planning Commission relating to the adoption of zoning text amendments to the Boone County zoning regulations applicable to the Boone County Fiscal Court and legislative bodies for the cities of Florence, Walton, and the City of Union as members of the Boone County Planning Unit, and recommending that these zoning text amendments be considered for enactment to regulate and define solar energy systems and battery storage facilities and identify zoning districts where such uses are allowed as authorized uses within the Boone County Planning Unit for Boone County, Kentucky. The text amendments to the Boone County zoning regulation being to Article 40, Section 4000, Article 5, Section 505.1, Article 5, Section 505.2, Article 5, Section 505.3, Article 5, Section 505.4, Article 5, Section 505.5, Article 31, Section 3117, and Article 31, Section 3118, subject to the recommended terms and provisions set forth in these recommended zoning text amendments set forth in the Technical Design Review Committee Report. All interested people and organizations in the city aren't invited to attend the public hearing to submit oral or written comments or proposed text amendments. Any person, especially seniors and disabled citizens who cannot submit written statements to attend the public hearing but wish to submit comments should call the city clerk at 859-647-8177 so arrangements can be made to secure their comments. This was submitted by Melissa Kramer, Florence City Clerk. Has the city clerk received any written comments from citizens?
Yes, I've received two comments. I received a comment from Resident Florence Sepp Gentry and Resident Florence Naomi Liebson, and both have been entered into the record.
At this time, I'm going to call upon Mr. Morgan to make a presentation with regard to this, the resolution that was forwarded to us from Boone County. This was a resolution initiated by Boone County and the Boone County Planning Commission, and it was forwarded to the City of Florence for action. Mr. Morgan.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to start out with solar energy systems, the proposed zoning text for the City of Florence. So first to Article 40 of the zoning regulations, these definitions would be added to the code. The first one is solar energy system, "a system including its individual components and/or subsystems that collects solar energy for electricity generation, consumption, or transmission, or for thermal applications." There's also a definition for solar energy system footprint. I'm not going to read that one over, but that's how the footprint of the system is determined. Then we get into solar energy system ground mounted, "a solar energy system that is structurally mounted to the ground and does not qualify as a solar energy system integrated." And there are three tiers for that, for ground mounted. The first one is a footprint of less than 2,500 square feet or no more than 10% of the roof area of the principal structure. Tier two is a footprint between 2,500 square feet and five acres. And tier three is a footprint greater than five acres. Then you get into solar energy system integrated, "a solar energy system where the solar materials are incorporated into the building materials such that the building and solar system are reasonably indistinguishable, or where the solar materials are used in place of traditional building components such that the solar energy system is structurally an integral part of the building." And lastly, solar energy system rooftop is a solar energy system that is structurally mounted to the roof of the building and does not qualify as a solar energy system integrated. Would like to point out for these definitions that they are the same exact definitions that were adopted by Boone County Fiscal Court. There have been no changes to these definitions. So we're going to start out with a more thorough overview of solar energy system rooftop. So these are just two typical examples of that.
Mr. Morgan. Can everybody hear? Okay, I don't know if you're close enough to your microphone.
Okay, try to scoot closer. Okay, so the first thing I'd like to note is the entire planning commission record is part of this record. So this chart was included in the November 6th, 2024 Boone County Planning Commission staff report. And I've highlighted rooftops. So again, we're only speaking about rooftops at this point. Fifteen jurisdictions across Kentucky were analyzed, and you can see that list on the left-hand side of the slide. Eight allow rooftop solar energy systems in all zones. Seven do not allow rooftop solar energy systems in any zone. Four have a five-foot height limit above the roof line. Three do not permit lighting of solar panels. The City of Florence regulations would allow rooftop solar energy systems in all zones if the requirements listed in Section 3117 of the zoning regulations are met. And those, these are Section 3117, some highlights of them. The draft Florence code allows rooftop solar energy systems in all zoning districts as an accessory use. So of course, an accessory use is accessory to the principal structure. So the requirements found in there, first one, it has to conform with the height requirements of the zone, found in Section 3124. Secondly, there are rooftop solar panel visibility and roof location requirements. The first one is rooftop solar panels can be visible from streets and adjoining properties when located in agricultural and residential zones if letters 2E and 2F are met below. Would like to point out this would include carports, sheds, et cetera, because those are accessory structures as well. Rooftops, this is second one, letter B. Rooftop solar panels shall not be visible from streets when located in commercial, office, industrial, public facilities, airport, and Florence Main Street zones. Letter C, rooftop solar panels shall not be visible from adjoining properties when located in commercial, office, public facilities, and Florence Main Street zoning districts. Letter D, rooftop solar panels shall not be visible from adjoining properties when located in industrial or airport zones unless the adjoining property is zoned, industrial or airport. However, in no case shall a rooftop solar panel extend more than 10 feet above the highest portion of the roof or parapet in an industrial or airport zone. Letter E, rooftop solar panels on flat roofs shall not be visible when located in a residential zone. And letter F shall be positioned on pitched roofs so they don't extend above or beyond any ridge, hip, valley, or eve in all other zoning districts. Number three, shall not be illuminated, and all surfaces must be matte or not reflective or non-reflective. Number four, associated wires and cables shall not be visible from public view or shall be concealed in conduit which is color coordinated with the subject structure in all zoning districts. Number five, associated equipment cabinets, inverters, et cetera, shall be A, inside the structure or attached to the side and rear of the structure where the rooftop system is proposed. And letter B, not be visible from public roadways when located outside. They can be screened with fencing or landscaping. Would like to cover the differences between the unincorporated Boone County Code, again, which was adopted, and the proposed City of Florence City of Florence regulations. There are additional requirements in Section 3117, and there is follows. Requirements were added to address the visibility of rooftop solar panels, and I just read those over. Wires and cables must be hidden from view or concealed in conduit. Thirdly, equipment cabinets, inverters, et cetera, must be located inside the subject structure where the system is proposed or located so that they will not be visible from public roadways. Again, they could be screened with fencing or landscaping. So that's the difference between our code and the unincorporated Boone County adopted code. Just want to go over some pictures of what the draft code. So this one on the top left is a good example for a single-family residential dwelling. The rooftop panels do not extend above any ridges, hips, valleys, or eaves. All wires are concealed. You get into an apartment building, this is a good example. All the rooftop solar panels are fully screened by the parapet. Good example for an apartment, office, or hotel with a flat roof. All panels are screened by the parapet walls and not visible from public view. Last, on the bottom right, good example for an industrial building. Would like to point out the draft code would allow, if the industrial property or airport property adjoins another industrial or airport property, those solar panels could stick 10 feet above the roof line. These are some bad examples, in our opinion, for rooftop solar panels in residential zones. The panels extend above roof, ridges, hips, and valleys, and wires are visible. So you can see how these extend above wires, and that code we would have would require wires to be concealed or hidden from view. And again, you can see the wires on the bottom right. So those are bad examples in staff's view. Now we're going to highlight solar energy systems integrated. And again, these are where they're built into the building or indistinguishable. So the difference between the unincorporated Boone County and City of Florence regulations. First, unincorporated Boone County allows integrated solar energy systems in all zoning districts as a principally permitted use and does not have any requirements listed in Section 3117. The draft Florence code allows integrated solar energy systems in all zoning districts as a principally permitted use except for the Florence Main Street zone. The City of Florence requirements for integrated SES would be as follows. Wires or cables shall not be visible from public view or shall be concealed in conduit which is color coordinated with the subject structure. Secondly, associated equipment cabinets, inverters, et cetera, shall A, be inside the structure or attached to the side or rear of the structure on which the integrated system is proposed, and B, not be visible from public roadways. They can be screened with fencing or landscaping. So those are the differences. Some good examples of solar materials integrated into the building design on the top. These are solar shingles or solar panels integrated into the design on the end. And a bad example would be those solar shingles because they're highly distinguishable between the normal shingles on the house. This is not in the draft code book right now, but after, we got some of the comments from the public. We could allow integrated solar energy systems or structures as accessory uses in all zones except Florence Main Street. This would allow accessory structures like solar fences, solar light poles, et cetera, to be permitted if the integrated solar energy system definition is met. Some changes would need to be made to the definition and use matrices. And just example of a good light pole and a good solar fence design. Now we're going to go over to ground-mounted systems. So again, this chart was in the planning commission record, and again, we're going to highlight the ground-mounted in yellow. Fifteen jurisdictions again analyzed. Six allow ground-mounted solar energy systems in agricultural zones with a conditional use permit. One principally permits ground-mounted SES in agricultural zones. One allows ground-mounted SES in residential zones with a conditional use permit. Three allow ground-mounted solar energy system in commercial zones with a conditional use permit. Six allow ground-mounted solar energy systems in industrial zones with a conditional use permit. Two principally permit ground-mounted SES in industrial zones. As far as ground-mounted height requirements, they range between 10 and 25 feet. Setbacks from property lines includes residential structures differ greatly, which you can see in that chart as far as the setbacks requirements in these two columns. Thirteen require decommissioning. So as far as our Section 3117, and again, I'm just going to go back over the definition because I know I'm going over a lot of information. A tier one is a solar energy system, ground-mounted, with a footprint of less than 2,500 square feet or no more than 10% of the roof area of the principal structure. Just a couple notes about that. The principal structure would need to have a 24,999 square foot roof to allow the full 2,499 square feet of ground-mounted SES by the definition. They are permitted as accessory uses in, as accessory uses in industrial and airport zones in the city. As far as conditional use, they are a conditional use in agricultural zones. That would require that to be acted on by the Florence Board of Adjustment or the Boone County Planning Commission if it was part of a zone change. The tier one requirements that are outlined. The footprint of an accessory ground-mounted SES shall be less than the footprint of the principal structure on site and also meet the definition above. Section 3153 of the zoning regulations limits accessory uses to side and rear yards except in agricultural zones where they can also be in the front yard. But again, remember, the agricultural zone requires the conditional use permit. So it's not a use by right. Lighting is limited. All surfaces must be matte or non-reflective as far as permitted height limits. 10 feet maximum when the subject property adjoins a residential or agriculturally-zoned property. 20 feet maximum when the subject property does not adjoin a residential or agriculturally-zoned property. Six, wires or cables shall not be visible from public view. They must be buried or concealed in conduit. Seven, all fencing must comply with Section 3655 of the zoning regulations. As far as decommissioning, all structures and facilities associated with the solar energy system, including all underground wiring, conduits, equipment, shall be removed within six months after the system has ceased to generate electricity or thermal energy. As far as the tier two definition, that is a solar energy system, again, ground-mounted with a footprint between 2,500 square feet and five acres. The tier three definition is a ground-mounted system with a footprint greater than five acres. The unincorporated Boone County Code and draft City of Florence Code do not allow tier two or tier three ground-mounted SES systems. There are citing restrictions in the code and screening requirements in case a tier two or tier three system was ever proposed, and that can be done with a plan development. Uses that are not allowed can be sought through that process. If that is ever done, that would be a planning commission recommendation to the city, and the city would take final action on that request. So that, that would give us a starting point if one of those was ever proposed as far as regulations in place. All right, so major differences for ground-mounted SES between the county and the city draft. Number one, unincorporated Boone County, tier one, solar energy systems as a permitted accessory use in all zones. City of Florence, tier one, ground-mounted SES is a permitted accessory use in industrial and airport zones and a conditional use in agricultural zones. Number two, the unincorporated Boone County has a 20-foot maximum height limit in all zones. The City of Florence draft limits heights as follows. Tier one is a 10-foot maximum when the subject property adjoins residential or agriculturally-zoned property. Letter B, tier one, 20-foot maximum when subject property does not adjoin residential or agriculturally-zoned property. As far as tiers two and three, it would be a 20-foot maximum. Number three, City of Florence requires wires and cables to be hidden from view, which again, would be buried or concealed in conduit. Tier two and three, there are no major differences. They are not permitted, and we're using the same standards or requirements. Just a good ground-mounted tier one example in an agricultural area, less than 10 feet tall, small footprint. Again, wires buried, concealed, easily screened. These, and again, staff's view, some bad examples of ground-mounted tier one in an agricultural zone. Certainly taller than 10 feet tall could cause aesthetic impacts. On the bottom would be a tier, really a tier three example, but tier two or three would be a large footprint with aesthetic impacts. Now we are going to get into the battery, battery energy storage systems or best zoning text amendments. Again, these are the definitions that would be in Article 40. There's a definition of what a battery is as far as the battery energy storage system. There's tier one and tier two. So tier one has an aggregate energy capacity less than or equal to 600 kilowatt-hours or consists of only a single energy storage system technology. An example of that would be a Tesla system at your household. A tier two battery energy storage system has an aggregate energy capacity greater than 600 kilowatt-hours or consists of more than one energy storage system technology. And that would be something that would be done at an industrial site. The draft code allows tier one battery energy storage of facilities as an accessory use in all zoning districts subject to the following requirements found in Section 3118 of the zoning regulations. First, exterior battery cabinets, boxes, containers shall A, not be visible from public streets. They can be screened with fencing or landscaping. Letter B, not exceed the maximum fence height of the zoning district. C, shall not have associated wires or cables visible from public view. All such wires, cables shall be hidden or concealed in conduit which correlates to the subject structure. The requirements listed above do not apply in unincorporated Boone County. So we, we added those to our draft regulations. As far as tier two, the draft code allows tier two battery energy storage systems as a conditional use in industrial and airport zoning districts. As far as those requirements, one can be freestanding operations, which will be the principal use or an accessory use to a business operation. Number two, facility shall be setback 200 feet from the property line of any property within a residential district and 50 feet from any other property line. Three, buffer yard D shall be provided where a battery energy storage system facility is adjacent to a property within a residential district. In all other cases, buffer yard shall be provided per the requirements of Section 3645 of the zoning regulations. Number four, all onsite utility line shall be placed underground to the extent feasible as permitted by the servicing utility with the exemption of the main service connection. Number five, areas within 10 feet of the best facility shall be cleared of combustible vegetation and combustible growth. Six, the average noise generated from the best facility and its associated ancillary equipment shall not exceed a noise level of 60 decibels as measured at the property line of the site upon which the facility is located. Permitted height of a tier two system is 20 feet. Eight wires and cables associated with the battery energy storage shall not be visible from public view or be concealed in conduit. Nine, all structures and facilities associated with the best facility, including underground wiring, conduits, equipment, shall be removed within six months from the beginning of the decommissioning operation. The only difference between the unincorporated Boone County Code and the City of Florence draft code is Boone County principally permits the use in the industrial and airport zones, and the City of Florence requires a conditional use permit. So some good tier one examples up top. Close to the household, again, could be easily screened. Some bad examples, just the visibility of the wires, that they were, you know, visible from neighbors. This is a tier two example. Aesthetic impacts would need to be considered with that. They may be appropriate in industrial and airport zones. And again, the Boone, Boone County, the Florence Board of Adjustment or Planning Commission would analyze that conditional use permit and make sure that that use is appropriated on that airport or industrial zone property. That is what I have for a presentation. I certainly have the full code available that I can go to if anyone has questions about any of the attachments.
At this time, we will make sure that everybody who wishes to speak signs in on the, in the back there. And if you would like to speak, make sure that you are signed in. It's very exciting to see public participation at our meetings and also at this hearing tonight. So thank you all for coming and taking an active interest in your city. We will let people speak who have signed in, and we just ask that you be respectful. You know, try to keep it to two to three minutes. We don't want a lot of repetitive comments, but please feel free, if you feel like you need to address the body, feel free to do that. Council will not be making any decisions tonight. Council will vote on this proposal. I, as mayor, do not vote on any zoning matters, nor can I break a tie with regard to such. And this is about accessory uses. Keep in mind, carports, dumpster enclosures, sheds. This is not, unfortunately, a lot of people are very fervent in their belief about sustainable energy. I probably join them in those thoughts. I think solar energy, wind energy, green energies are great things for us to pursue. But this is not a hearing with regard to convincing council of the benefits of solar energy. This, just want to make sure everybody understands. This is not debating the debate or debating the benefit of solar energy systems and what they can do for our, our community's energy needs or your personal energy needs or the personal benefit or detriment of having such systems. This is a zoning hearing with regard to how these structures fit into our zoning code and how do we incorporate the zoning information to make sure that any of these accessory structures, again, think carports, dumpster enclosures, sheds. This would be another accessory structure. How do we govern and rule on these types of structures? So I just want to make sure everybody understands that before the get-go, but we do absolutely want to hear from everyone who is signed in and wants to be heard. So if we can have our city clerk go and retrieve. I believe everyone has signed in. Okay, please wait until... Okay, I was going to say, but please just wait till I call on you, okay? Just, please wait. Please wait. Please wait. Please, sir, please wait. The first person on our list tonight for our public hearing is Brandon Ashcraft of Florence, Kentucky. Sir, are you Mr. Ashcraft?
I'm sorry?
Are you Mr. Ashcraft?
Am I? Yeah, I am, Mr. Ashcraft.
All right. Could you please proceed with your comments?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hey, gang. Okay, so as I was saying, I appreciate you all being here and your efforts on our behalf. Really, really good work. And I got to tell you, I read through the draft, and I do think that there are a lot of good things there. I like that you have... Did you write this? Okay, hats off to the architect. It's actually really, really good. I like what you got going here. I actually work in sort of an oblique industry. I work with a company that does energy efficiency upgrades for businesses. And I wanted to point out that, to anybody that's still on the fence and hesitating on something like this, the types of technology that I use in my business are ultimately, what they lead to is the ability to use things like solar and wind energy. So if you're thinking about capacity and things like that, I can tell you that my company, the first year I was there, we took four megawatts off of the grid that year. So we are working all the time to make sure that technology like this can actually benefit people without going over, blowing up the bank, or burning anybody down. The, while I do agree with things like the, the requirements for cable and things like that, I'm a little concerned about things like having enclosures visible. And the reason I say that is because if somebody has no other recourse but to run a conduit from their rooftop solar system down to their service entrance point, a lot of those are already visible to the public. You know what I mean? And it seems like it'd be sort of counterintuitive to say, yes, your meter can be visible, but not this clean, neat box of an enclosure. You know what I mean? And if it's done right, it will just look like that. It'll look like any other enclosure you might see as far as an electrical application goes. So I think that we, I would really appreciate if maybe you guys consider opening up, at least for residences, something like those kinds of hidden requirements because I do think that that would be detrimental to some of the residents who want to do this. Good things, safety, equipment management, I think are all really great. I do like the fact that it has the matte requirement. I think that goes a long way to helping with anybody that still has it due to aesthetic reasons. I know that my neighbor has solar. Ironically, I, I actually, not too long before I realized that, heard about this meeting, and I was remembering. I was like, man, I don't even know how long he's had solar. Because until I looked directly at his roof... know how long he's had solar, because until I looked directly at his roof, I had no idea. And I even tested it on my way here tonight, I kinda like, I was driving by, said, okay, there's solar, do I see it out of the corner of my eye? No, I don't, okay? He does have a matte finish to it, and I think that any of the aesthetic arguments can be assuaged between things like the matte finish and design incorporation. I think that, for example, Florence as a city, might be well served to do something like what the zoo has done. I don't know if you guys have been up there anytime in the recent past, but they put solar panels up over all the parking lots, and so that's where they're getting a large chunk of their power, and one of the great benefits of that is you always park in the shade, you know, and I could really see that being a great thing to add somewhere, for example, like between here and the aquatic center, you know, having those cars parked in the shade, family comes down, has a nice time at the aquatic center, they get in, they don't, they don't get burned on hot seats because they've been parking in the shade all the time, providing the, with the solar panels, providing power for things like the pool pumps. You know, I really do think it'd be advantageous and a financial win for the city to keep doing that specifically in the public places. Excuse me just a second. Okay, so I did have a question about structure. Now, if I were to take a couple of panels, and I were to put legs on them, and hoist them up in such a way that the panels themselves create a roof of the structure, would that be considered an integrated system? Or would that suddenly fall under structural concerns?
Integrated structure has to be indistinguishable, so it's basically, those panels need to be flush mounted on the roof and not exto-
I mean, I mean, bringing it up in such a way that the actual panel is the roof. Would that be integrated, or would that, would that still fall subject under rooftop-
Mr. Morgan, is, I don't know, I'm just gonna ask to maybe help clarify for his question, and integrated means that there is a principal structure already, and the solar panels are integrated into that structure, that the solar panels are not the principal structure, they're not the principal structure.
Actually, integ-
Correct, is that, please try to explain, because I, that's, I want to make sure we're clear.
Integrated right now, integrated in the draft code right now is listed as principal, because it's part of the household, or part of the structure, so it's actually part of the structure, and what I was thinking of doing, remember I talked about that, we were thinking about also allowing integrated as accessory structures, so that's, the solar carport could be allowed, or the fence, so that's something we were thinking of, gonna analyze further.
What I want to make sure is that-
You could allow it if it was a part of a carport, so I don't know why you would build like a roof out of something without being a shed or a carport, but what we would do in that situation is we would take a look at the, whatever structure you were building, and we would evaluate it through that process, it sounds like it could be an integrated structure.
Well, here's, here's why I ask, there, I know there is an argument out there that we're wasting valuable agricultural land and things like that on solar, and I, in some ways, I agree, I think that multi-use of land is key to something like that. So what I'm thinking is if there were a way to elevate those solar panels so that livestock and whatnot could graze underneath, you know, possibly have like a coop underneath, for example, for your chickens or something like that, that integrate where it would say, you know, you got this empty field, you're normally gonna put a solar field there, and then that's its only use, to be able to make the room to have multi-use types of things, because I don't think it has to be one way or the other, you know what I mean, I do think we can, we can be creative in design to both settle the aesthetic arguments and the practical uses of the land, if that makes sense. Yeah, that's why I ask about that.
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Hunt, I think really, we would have to see a picture of what we were talking about, some kind of representative photo to-
I didn't really see anything you had there that-
No, but I mean, if you can find something, we could look at it.
Um, okay, okay, I mean, it's fairly simple, just picture one of your things, let's say, you know, a couple slanted here, so you get both sides of the sun, you don't need to put them on motors, right? And then all underneath of it, it's shelter for cattle, it's, you know, maybe where the water trough is, something like that, I don't know, you know? But I do think that multi-use and things like that, and that's one of my concerns about the sizing requirements, are that they, those may interrupt and have unintended consequences like that, where they can't necessarily do something like that on the land, does that make sense?
But, yeah, the, again, all these are basically accessory or, so again, we're gonna have to see a representative picture, and then we could better evaluate it.
Fair enough, I'm not prepared with that, so I'll move on. Let's see, okay, okay, well, the others are my ideological points, so I'll skip those since we're not doing that. But I thank you for your all's time and hearing me out, I strongly encourage all of you, even if it has to end up being this language, please vote for it, I think that we could be leaders in Kentucky with this type of solar program, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next on our list is Jonathan Andrews, if you could come to the podium, from Uts Drive in Florence. You may need to pull that microphone down, I don't, yeah, there you go.
May it please the council. My name is Jonathan Andrews, I live at Uts Drive here in Florence. By trade, I'm an industrial electrician, working shifts in a steel mill, I moved to this city a little over seven years ago, after transitioning out of six years of military service as a nuclear reactor operator onboard the attack submarine USS New Mexico. I bought my house in Florence in April of 2020, and the following spring, I began the process of adding solar panels to my house, with the express purpose of reducing the cost of my electric bill. I worked with SolGen, a solar power installation company, to assess, design, install, and test the solar energy array on my roof. The company, I also worked with Duke Energy to establish a net metering contract on my behalf, in which Duke Energy pays me dollar for dollar, the electricity that my panels produce to be deducted off of my utility bill. Early October 2021, panels were installed, they were operating, the results were immediate, they gave me an app called Sense, Sense app uses a current measuring device, it's installed at my main electrical panel in my house, and using that in my Duke Energy bill, I discovered that the remaining weeks of October, my panels were, had produced 360 kilowatt hours of electrical power, while I had only used 332, meaning I produced 28 kilowatt hours in excess of what I consumed. You must understand, no battery system on mine is installed on my property. I sell the electrical power back to the grid, which Duke Energy pays me for by deducting it off my bill. During the summer months, I consume the most electricity, running central air conditioning, while at the same time, my panels produce the most electricity due to the long days. Winter days are shorter, which reduces the amount of electricity my panels generate, and at the same time, I use less electrical power, since my house is heated with a gas furnace. Most efficient seasons are spring and fall, when my AC is not running and the days are moderate in length. I do have a statement of what I've written here, available for the city clerk, that, where I go through annual consumption, but the overall purpose of my array was to reduce my electric bill costs, which it's successfully done. Panels themselves, about $30,000, but I financed, and the way they financed was very interesting, the terminal loan, 25 years, no punishment for early payoff, the pay amount was uniquely calculated, with my oversight, they calculated what the average electric bill would be over a 25-year period, set the minimum payment at that amount. So, long story short, on top of a $7,000 tax credit I got from the federal government, which went towards the loan, overall payment is about $108, plus an electric bill in the summertime, about $50 to $80, which is a lot less than what my neighboring houses of similar size are paying, upwards of $350 on their electric bill in the summertime, while I'm paying 190, 108 of which goes to something that I own. So at worst, over 25 years, I break even, at worst. My solar panels are doing their job, and they've successfully reduced my electric bill by significant amounts, they're efficient, they're reasonably priced, an excellent investment, which I'm glad to have made, and I must ask this council that others, why others should not be afforded the same opportunity that I had. Not all solar panel systems are going to work the same way, they have to be oriented to the sun in just the right way, the panels on my house face south, if a house is ready for solar, and it is a good position, but needs to be raised up just a little bit, other than aesthetic reasons, what's to prevent them from doing that? What is, what is the wrong in doing so? I am also slightly disappointed that the city did not reach out to me for input on my solar system prior to writing the proposed ordinance. The city, I know it was made aware of the solar project when it issued the permits to me for its construction, and so should have been aware that such an array existed. My panels are a very proud and very prominent feature of my home, and I'm always willing to answer questions and clear up the common misconceptions, which I do have some lists of, about, you can read in the comments that I have, that I will present to Ms. Kramer, the common misconception like efficiency, do I have a battery system? A lot of the solar production right now, I do with a micro-inverter, micro-inverters, they take the DC signals that are generated by the solar panels and turn them into AC, alternating current, which is used in my house. Each panel has its own little micro-inverter, so there's no large inverter system that I would have to worry about, and most new structures, people who want to build solar are going to use this, so the aesthetics of a giant inverter box are not going to be an issue. I also work in the steel industry, we use a lot of electricity, I also want to talk about, we want to encourage more people to build solar energy arrays, solar, have solar panels on their houses. So in the steel industry, we work with, there is a lot of electricity demand at our mill. During the summer months, the weekends, when everybody in, in the residences are running their air conditioners, energy demand on the grid goes incredibly high, so as a result, they give power curtailments to such industries, where we are forced to shut down our mill in order to maintain the grid for residential use, because residences have the priority. But encouraging people to build more solar panels by having fewer restrictions in the city would make those far less frequent than they are in the summertime. I get paid a production bonus, when we're not producing steel, my paycheck goes down. Having more people with more solar panels, more businesses with solar panels, it reduces the draw on the power grid, and allows us to stay up and running. The city has a great opportunity to utilize solar power, everybody seems to be approve of the new lighting system that was installed at the skate park, if the city were to adopt a solar array nearby, the energy produced in the day would more than offset the energy consumed by the lighting system at night. This council and the city have enough power and influence to negotiate a good net metering contract with our energy providers, which will allow us to offset our electrical power consumption in the, as long as the sun is still in the sky, saving our taxpayers money in the long run. Battery systems could even be installed to provide power to critical safety systems throughout the city during a major power outage, such as traffic lights or street lamps, ensuring public safety on the roadways. I am certainly an advocate for social, for solar energy, the city should be friendly to the efforts of private individuals and businesses in their effort to save money or to help the environment through the use of solar power. The city should also adopt the use of solar energy on municipal property to help offset the rising costs of energy. No one owns the sunshine, is there for us to use as we please, and I would like to harness its power to make electricity to power my home and the homes of my neighbors. We are stewards of our own environment, and stewards of the city, and our efforts should be contributing to the benefits of everyone. No harm comes to my neighbors from having solar panels, only good, and that's what I want to be, a good neighbor and a good citizen. We'll be more than willing to answer any questions you might have.
Jonathan, thank you, and thank you for your service, my brother was a nuclear server too, so I do, I do know the demands of that job, so thank you so much for your comments. Next, we do have Naomi Liebson, from Uts Drive in Florence.
Hello, my name's Naomi, I'm, I also live on Uts Drive, and I'm, I live with him. So first of all, I'd like to thank everybody for staying after city council meeting, normal hours, this is, you know, I hope it's not too big of an inconvenience for you. But kind of carrying on from what he said, energy independence, it strengthens our grid, and it makes us more resilient during the storms, and obviously, the power grid, these things are becoming more frequent due to climate change, we're seeing this more, how many storms have we had in just the last few weeks? Currently, the city of Florence is running as if it's the 1980s, with the sort of Ronald Reagan school of governance, and it's 2025, not 1985, and the city is very, very behind on how the modern world operates, there's a lot of new technology, there's a lot of new ideas, and right now, the city of Florence is not embracing that change, which is a huge problem, because it's created a situation where we are behind substantially the rest of the world, which in the long term is going to impact us on an economic level and just on a recognition level throughout, throughout our country and our state and our world. It's, our government institutions generally need to be updated. I think the gerontocracy we have in government lacks the foresight and drive to deal with current and future issues, and also, and this is no offense, but we lack the creativity to produce a sustainable future. We need to accept that climate change is an existential risk, and the city needs to evolve and join the 21st century to create a modern vibrant city. Climate change requires government's aid and intervention, as well as cooperation and regulation of industry. I would like to request a motion, and if we can't do this here, maybe put it to the agenda next week, to create an official climate change committee for the city of Florence. It would be tasked with the following, A, to assess the long-term impacts of climate change on the city of Florence, its residents and businesses, B, create an official climate action plan to decarbonize Florence by 2050, this would include short, medium, and long-term strategies for implementation across local government, the community, and industry, every single city in the world has this already. The C, the climate change committee will need participation from both esteemed civil servants, as well as citizens with expertise in fields related to and impacted by the climate crisis. D, the climate change committee will explore changes to zoning policy, as well as promotion of citizen initiatives to mitigate the impacts of climate chaos. As I said, this is a committee that is already standard in towns and cities and states, not just across the United States, but across the world, okay? And sometimes, these are actually done at, you know, continent levels. The, currently, in Frankfurt, they actually have a Go Solar program, that I have linked the website to Melissa in my statement, they also have a Kentucky Conservation Committee in Florence, which could actually be a very valuable resource for Florence to reach out to, so we know what Frankfurt is doing, and they could actually provide guidance and help. Climate change is a complex, multifaceted issue that requires complex, multifacinated solutions, one of which is solar energy and other forms of sustainable energy. We cannot continue ignoring this situation, the world is on fire, and if we do nothing, we will sentence our children to live in an uninhabitable world full of pollution and environmental chaos. There is no planet B. We must act now. Local government can play a huge part in mitigating environmental damage, but just like addiction, the first step is acknowledging that we have a problem. The city of Florence is point blank refusing to admit that climate change is real, and that together through local government, industry, and community, we can do our part to slow the tipping points that we have already reached- we can do our part to slow the tipping points that we have already reached and are quickly approaching. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Naomi. Appreciate it. Next, Mr. Ed Arnold from Boone County.
Yes, thank you very much from Boone County. However, my W-2 shows $779.13 going to you guys. So, there you go. I work in the city of Florence. Thank you for your time. The question is, why? Why are we doing this? We should be promoting solar technologies as opposed to discouraging them, and this looks like quite a discouragement. How about the looks of a solar-powered plant sitting in your city? Would you rather have that? I think, why do this at all? Aesthetics is the only thing that I'm hearing. And you can have a lot of cars on blocks and junk piles throughout the city and county. They need attention. They don't get the attention that this is getting now. So, I own solar. It's mostly temporary. It can sit in my yard if I need to use it. I don't think that anything in this provision comes to dealing with temporary solar power panels that you would put out in your yard or anything like that during, during an emergency. So, they're, they're out in my backyard from time to time. As many of you know, I was once a news reporter in Frankfurt covering the General Assembly, and back in that day in Frankfurt, the General Assembly met 60 days every two years. And there was a lot of discussion about having it meet two days every 60 years. The reason for that is because there were a lot of people who felt that there was overreach by our legislatures and overproduction of restrictions. That still occurs. Nobody seems to legislate to produce freedoms. We all seem to legislate to contain and restrict freedom, and this is what you're doing. My point is, let's keep it to only what's absolutely necessary. Allow people to do on their property what they, what doesn't harm anyone else. Soon, this technology will be common. Panels will be aimed for efficiency, and many of, can't be done that way just by putting them flat on the roof. I know that, and they know that too. The aesthetics will affect the value of each property, so the owner will want to comply with best practices, negating any need for law. So, the need for many of these regulations will soon become unnecessary. The overreach on this could easily be likened to that of many HOAs, and certainly, I don't think the city wants to be seen as an HOA. Embrace progress, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arnold. Next speaker would be Zeb Gentry Tammerack Drive in Florence.
Hi, council. So, I think a lot of the stuff that I was going to bring up was already kind of addressed with the presentation because I submitted the public comment early. And there was one thing that was previously mentioned specifically regarding the integrated solar, and I know that was something you actually brought up in the presentation that I feel like needs to make sure to be addressed with this. Specifically, the Cincinnati Zoo is a great example of it with the carport that they have for the parking lots, and if that is a ground-mounted array or if that is integrated array. And I think that distinction is very important because that distinction can then be taken to the level of, if I have three carports that are all built in as one integrated solar, one integrated system, then is that just a ground-mounted array that I could park three cars under? And if not, you know, there's, there's the restrictions with height and everything with that. So, I think that's a very important discussion for this that needs to happen. And regarding the visibility of the cables and conduits and everything, I, I have solar at my house. When I bought my house in 2022, I immediately put solar on it within the first few months. And with that, they put metal conduit outside my house, so you can see the metal conduit going from one array to the other because I have multiple pitch, or multiple roofs, sections. And that metal conduit is not allowed under this. It would need to be painted the same color as my house. And while I understand that aesthetics are important to a lot of people, I don't think someone buying my house is going to care that it's metal conduit rather than the color of yellow that my house is. And with the equipment, the equipment specifically needs to be out of sight from any street. My house, that's impossible outside because there's a house, or there's a street behind my house that you could see between my neighbors, any part of my backyard, any part of the side of my house, any part of it. And landscaping with fencing or anything like that, if you were to have a fencing blocking that area, you would have to block the entire power panel completely, which would not be up to the electrical code for, for that. So, whenever the visibility aspects are taken into this, you, you can't just think of a single house on a street all by itself. You need to think about the houses that have streets behind them where you can see the entire house. You have to think about, there is electrical code to be taken into account regards to the ability to get to an emergency shut-off if there are emergency situations. Many of these solar systems require emergency shut-off so that fire EMS can come and shut that off in an emergency if need be, and that needs to be readily, readily accessible and readily viewable, viewable, something that the visibility stuff kind of just sweeps under the rug a little bit. So, I think that that's something that really needs to be addressed with this specifically. And regarding the battery storage portion of this, in the definitions for the Tier One, it limits Tier One to 600 kilowatts or one technology system. And I don't think that, you mentioned this at all. I know some of my other points were addressed, like the solar fencing and stuff. So, I don't know if there's a specific definition to the battery technology portion of that code, if there's something that could be said as to what that means. What is, what is a technology? Is it a specific brand? Is it a specific type of battery? Is it, what, what could that mean?
The example I was given from Boone County Planning Commission and the zoning administrator would be like Tier One would be a Tesla system at a house. That's one technology.
So, if I were to buy a Tesla Powerwall for my house today, and then in five years, Tesla stock's gone down, Tesla's no longer making those Powerwalls, and so I, I want to upgrade my battery storage. I want to be well under the 600 kilowatt-hours, but I buy an Enphase, that they're another brand, they make the microinverters that were previously talked about as well. If I buy their battery system and I were to add that to my additional one, that then means I have two technology systems if you go by the brand, or if you even go by the type of battery, because that's changing all the time with increasing progress of the, you know, batteries. So, that's where that technology portion, I understand what it's kind of trying to say. I think that in the residential aspect purely, it's a little bit misconstrued as to what that might mean later on for someone that wants to upgrade their system five years down the line, for example. So, and then, one final thing with that Tier Two as well, it limits to 600 kilowatt-hours, and commercial use is not permitted. It's not conditional. It's, it's not allowed at all for, for commercial to have a Tier Two system. The reason I think that that should be looked at is EV charging. EV charging requires a very, very large power draw on the grid, and there are solutions for having a smaller draw on the grid where you charge a battery that then charges the EV with that battery. And those typically have about 200 kilowatt-hours of storage. So, only three of those, and you've hit that limit, and a business could no longer have four of those to charge four EVs in their parking lot for customers that might want to shop while charging. And so, not even allowing conditional use. I understand there are, there is the ability for businesses to come in and to do the plan development and stuff like that, but not even listing it at all. It feels like a restriction that is going to be a hurdle to get past rather than something that, you know, you can work on to allow.
The reason EV charging wasn't addressed, it's that is a different section of the Boone County zoning regulations. So, that is addressed elsewhere in the code. So, that would not, it would not, this would not apply to EV charging.
So, it, it would because these systems, rather than directly charging an EV from the grid, charges a battery that's stored where you're charging at, and then charges the EV from that battery. So, that rather than needing 300 kilowatts from the grid, you only need 30 kilowatts from the grid, which has a, the cost of electric for that is very different. It's just price per kilowatt and total cost and everything.
Like I said, if it's, if it's an EV charging station, it's going to be addressed under a different section of code.
So, would EV charging that has batteries in the charger itself not apply at all to the battery restrictions here? Because that's where there is that distinction.
I'll have to look into that further. It, I believe it's, the answer is going to be it's a different, different code.
Yeah, I, I might not be making my point clear as to what this is because this isn't very common, and it's a lot more used in places like California that have very high price of electricity and a lot smaller, a lot more grid compaction. It's just, these are the types of things that these restrictions don't look into the future in terms of possibilities that they could be used for. By having a hard limit as to how many kilowatt-hours you can store, you know, there's no future expansion there in terms of how, how much, or how big an array can be. There's no expansion. That, that's kind of more the point with that one.
But one thing I will add, these, these texts, the text of the Boone County code is analyzed with every zoning update, and the code can always be updated.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
So, it will, it will be analyzed in the future.
Yes. It's more of the, the possibility of things like that it doesn't allow, but, and I, I want to be a little pedantic specifically about this zoning law. I'm pretty sure everyone here is going to know about the little solar lamp, lights that you can buy at Lowe's or Walmart or whatever and put on the walkways of your house, or, you know, lining the garden of your front. Those are technically under this ground-mounted solar arrays, which would be not allowed in any residential. It, that is pedantic in terms of there is no restrictions for how small of a solar array you can use. The example of having a single solar panel in your front yard for a power emergency and charging up a little battery, that, things like that, there are no, there are no limits to how small it gets. So, that's something to just think about in terms of allowing a panel or two and allowing that to be. Even the, the flock cameras that are around the city have a single solar panel, and that would then mount or be a ground-mounted solar array, which wouldn't be allowed. So, I think there are just some discussions there for the minimum footprint that this, that falls under this and the minimum amount of size.
When the things are that small, the intent's going to be that they're an integrated, they're part of an integrated system. I mean, when you can't see them from the street, when you...
I, I mean, I, the reason I recognize the flock cameras is because I recognize the solar panel on top, and you can see them, when you drive down Mall Road going northbound, you can see very clearly a solar panel on a, on a pole, and then underneath of that is a little bitty camera. It might be integrated, but then that turns into the other question of what's the difference between a ground-mounted and an integrated. There is no difference if you're considering a solar panel on a pole to be a ground-mounted, to be an integrated system to another solar panel on a pole to be ground-mounted.
Like I said, every, every one of these is, we're going to have to see a picture or spec of it and evaluate it and apply the definitions that get adopted.
Okay, so...
Todd, just, I just want to, maybe this is my thinking, but to be clear. So, the, the regulations deal with solar energy systems to generate power and to store power that to power a structure, or, correct?
Yeah, could be to power your, yeah, sure.
And that could, could be different than a self-limited solar power to, to power a piece of equipment. Would that not, would that fall under a different zoning regulation? In the, in sense of a flock camera, that's not a structure. That's a piece of equipment.
Sure.
And that could be, that could be the difference.
We, we had this debate. Landscape lighting, flagpole lights that are ran by solar panels, that's all considered integrated because it's an integral part of the light itself. Those are allowed by right, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
So...
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that would be everything, though. So, all right. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Gentry was the last one to sign in for our public hearing. So, is there any further comment from council? Yes, ma'am?
Thank you very much for everyone that came out. Thank you for everyone that spoke. I think that you have all done a great deal of research, and it's very much appreciated. I hope that we can take the information that you guys have brought to us today and make sure that we're evaluating this ordinance even more thoroughly than I'm sure has already been done, and get something that all of our residents are comfortable with, and all of our businesses will be able to embrace solar panels and solar energy with.
Thank you. I was just going to mirror the same sentiment. Thanks. All right. At 7:50 PM, I will declare the public hearing closed at this time. Thank you all for coming.